All right, we are coming back into session after recess to engross bills. Uh, we have Congressman Potts, Congressman Tillman, and Congresswoman Lemon on the line. Everyone is present. We are going to move up to reports of select committees. Congressman King.
The rules, ethics, and engrossment met this morning. First up is bill number ONCA 2458, an act to amend ONCA 2173 for supplemental appropriation of nontribal funds to the Wildland Fire RTRL Blue Stem Project in the amount of $95,840 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor was Congresswoman Reevar. Final committee action is due, passes properly engrossed with three yes votes from King, Big Horse, and Hamilton. Next up was bill number ONCA 2459, an act to amend ONCA 2383 to provide appropriation modifications and supplemental appropriations to the executive branch in the amount of $4,712,163 of nontribal funds and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Reevar. Final committee action is due, passes properly engrossed with three yes votes from King, Big Horse, and Hamilton. Next up is bill number ONCA 2460, an act to amend ONCA 2384 to provide authorization modifications to the executive branch for indirect costs, increasing the overall amount by $11,395 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Reevar. Final committee action was due, passes properly engrossed with three yes votes from King, Big Horse, and Hamilton. Next up was bill number ONCA 2461, an act to amend ONCA 2385 to provide appropriation modifications and supplemental appropriation to the executive branch in the amount of $162,884 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor was Congresswoman Reevar. Final committee action was due, passes properly engrossed with three yes votes from King, Big Horse, and Hamilton. Next up was ONCA 2462, an act to establish a revolving fund in the Treasury for Internet services to Osage Nation elders and authorize expenditures out of the fund and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor was Congressman Big Horse. Final committee action is due, passes properly engrossed with three yes votes from King, Big Horse, and Hamilton. Next up is bill number ONCA 24-63, an act to authorize and appropriate the amount of $382,620 to the Elder Broadband Assistance Fund and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Big Horse. Final committee action is due, passes properly engrossed with three yes votes from King, Big Horse, and Hamilton. Next up is bill number ONCA 24-64, an act to amend ONCA 2278 to provide a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $500,000 to the Storm Shelter Assistance Fund and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Potts. Final committee action is due, passes properly engrossed with three yes votes from King, Big Horse, and Hamilton. Next up is bill number ONCA 24-65, an act to amend ONCA 2385 to provide an appropriation to the Osage Veteran Memorial Fund in the amount of $72,000 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Potts. Final committee action is due, passes properly engrossed with three yes votes from King, Big Horse, and Hamilton. Next up is bill number ONCA 24-66, an act to amend 2385 to provide an appropriation to the Osage Nation Museum for a matching grant in the amount of $51,500 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Shaw. Final committee action is due, passes properly engrossed with three yes votes from King, Big Horse, and Hamilton. The final bill is ONCA 24-67, an act to amend ONCA 23-108 to provide supplemental appropriation to C.C. Opica in the amount of $400,000 in nontribal funds and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Stapler. Final committee action is due, passes properly engrossed with three yes votes from King, Big Horse, and Hamilton. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. We are now on bills and resolutions on third reading. ONCA 2458 is an act to amend ONCA 2173 for a supplemental appropriation of nontribal funds to the Wildland Fire RTRL Blue Stem Project in the amount of $95,840 and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Reevar. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak for or against? Hearing none, you have the floor.
I'll waive my time.
Thank you. The question is, shall ONCA 2458 pass?
Congresswoman Lemon? Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts? Congresswoman Redcorn? Congresswoman Reevar? Second Speaker Shaw? Congresswoman Stapler?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman King?
Yes.
Speaker Good Fox?
Yes.
There is an alternate effective date. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. It passes and will be advanced to enrollment. ONCA 2459, an act to amend ONCA 2383 to provide appropriation modifications and supplemental appropriations to the executive branch in the amount of $4,712,163 of nontribal funds and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Reevar. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak for or against? Hearing none, you have the floor.
I'll waive my time.
Thank you. The question is, shall ONCA 2459 pass?
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Reevar?
Yes.
Second Speaker Shaw?
Yes.
Congresswoman Stapler?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman? Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman King?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Speaker Good Fox?
Yes.
There is an alternate effective date. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. It passes and will be advanced to enrollment. ONCA 2460, an act to amend ONCA 2384 to provide authorization modifications to the executive branch for indirect costs, increasing the overall amount by $11,395 and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Reevar. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak for or against? Hearing none, you have the floor.
I'll waive my time.
Thank you. The question is, shall ONCA 2460 pass?
Congressman Potts? Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Reevar?
Yes.
Second Speaker Shaw?
Yes.
Congresswoman Stapler?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman? Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman King?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker? Speaker Good Fox?
Yes. There is an alternate effective date. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. It passes and will be advanced to enrollment.
ONCA 2461, an act to amend ONCA 2385 to provide appropriation modifications and supplemental appropriations to the executive branch in the amount of $162,884 and to establish an alternate effective date. Congresswoman Reevar is the sponsor. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak for or against? Hearing none, you have the floor.
I'll waive my time.
Thank you. The question is, shall ONCA 2461 pass?
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Reevar?
Yes.
Second Speaker Shaw?
Yes.
Congresswoman Stapler?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman? Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman King?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
No.
Congressman Potts?
No.
Speaker Good Fox?
There is an alternate effective date. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. It passes and will be advanced to enrollment.
ONCA 2462 is an act to establish a revolving fund in the Treasury for Internet services to the Osage Nation elders to authorize expenditures out of the fund and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Big Horse. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak for or against? Congresswoman Reevar?
Okay, thank you, Speaker. And just, I'll be quick. I agree to co-sponsor this with Congressman Big Horse as we do a lot of the legislation that comes before this branch. And I made the mistake, is they don't co-sponsor before I realized we were creating a revolving fund. And in that, I'm gonna vote yes for it, of course, but at this time. But again, I just, I really feel like creating these revolving funds to serve our people in a direct service manner is, it's not working. I don't think it's getting away from the intent. And I've been having conversations with Treasury and looking at these revolving funds since I became on Congress back in 2020, and here we are. And now I'm co-sponsoring to create a revolving fund, but the intent is the actual, the content of this bill, which is serving our elders. And one of the reasons that I amended and to change the age on this was so that it would make, be more logical to me and make more sense, so that we could serve more people. Thinking about, most certainly, folks at the 55 years and older. Where I came up with that amount was because within our executive branch, a lot of our programs use that as a limit to decide whether you're considered an elder for direct services purposes. And it's not consistent, and that's okay. It's a lot of federal dollars, federal scopes that say 55, and others say 65. But I wanted to move it down to 55 so that we could serve more people. In the mention about the children, I agree with that, but I felt like a lot of folks in that age range are now grandparents, and their kids are coming to their homes and things of that nature. So who we serve has been covered in this. How this came about, I may not totally agree with. Yesterday was kind of unclear. It wasn't, it was maybe a little bit, like, just do it. Makes sense. It's kind of flippant, and I don't, I don't work that way. I would have preferred the, what this looks like for our people, as far as AtLink wasn't here, and they're the ones that are gonna be offering the service. And I would have wished that there was a clear understanding so that I could explain to constituents as to what to expect. And right now, as I stand here, I can say that I'll vote for this, to provide the service, but how it's going to roll out, I'm not able to explain. And typically, I like to be here and understand that when I leave this branch, what's gonna happen. Right now, I don't know. I do know that I did receive a lot of messages in support of lowering the age to 55 and serving more people. The same time, I'm gonna have to, as comments were made by Congresswoman Stapler, we still have to remember where we are financially. And that can only be my vote, and that's something that I'm always concerned with, where we are. And we don't know where we are in this third quarter. We don't know if we've hit our revenue. We don't know what our burn rate is. I've been asking that information from Treasury. We did not receive it during the special session, and that's something I think I'm gonna start changing in law so that we're well-prepared before our sessions, not just from our budget analysts, but maybe looking at our Treasury law, so that we don't have to stand here or sit here and be concerned, where are we financially? And so discussing the revolving funds and bringing this about has opened up a lot of questions and provided me a footprint as to where I'm going in the future. So anyway, I will be voting yes to support the intent of this bill, but you know, not so great on the revolving fund, but here we are. I thank you.
Thank you. Any other member? Hearing none, Congressman Big Horse?
Madam Chair.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize, I wasn't picking up on the mute, but I'm gonna support this piece of legislation today. I've had a little bit of, you know, doubt, which I think we should all have that sometimes in looking at something new, and sometimes in reassessing a situation. I do believe that this is reactionary a little bit, mostly, maybe completely, because of the ACP funding that stopped through the US government. However, I do think that it is a worthy cause in keeping folks of the generation 55 and up connected. There's so many ways that we can stay connected now without having to see, and we've lost that. And this kind of brings that, can bring that back and ensure that hopefully some of our people that are homebound or that aren't able to travel as much can FaceTime with their families. Because that's what we used to do. We used to do it in person. We'd FaceTime in person. We drove to folks' homes and stayed sometimes for the weekend or several days and had that reconnection in that way. And technology has allowed us to not, to be able to change that. I am concerned about the future money that we're going to be able to continue to fund so many things, and knowing that we have a lot to still look at. I do think this is a good starting point. The revolving fund isn't my most favorite way to do this, however, there is always the option of, you know, coming in and amending it and doing away with the revolving fund, and we have the power to do that within this body. So that helps me to get to the yes piece of it also. I would like to see it possibly, it's just a suggestion, you know, ran as a help with the utility through our financial assistance department. In the sense of, we could have, it would just, I feel like it could be a vetted better in that way, because they already have systems in place for vetting. It's still a lot, it's more money than I'm 100% comfortable with, but I can be there, I can be okay with it, and hopefully we can know some more numbers and better numbers on what we're looking at on a yearly basis by the beginning of the fiscal year for folks that do apply for this. There's also another possibility, the US government would, again, fund the ACP program, which then this money, hopefully, they would be encouraged, the elders would be encouraged to use that program to save us some dollars also. I had another train of thought, but I've lost it. So I will be supporting this bill, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other member? Congresswoman Redcorn?
Thank you, Speaker. To be quite honest, I honestly don't know how I'm gonna vote on this at the moment. I hear the comments of support for this, but I, my brain and my heart keep going back to the fact that this is, there's no plan, there's no structure to this, other than Osages in Osage County that have AtLink, who are 55 years and older, will now have their Internet bill paid for. And it's not gonna be run like our other direct service programs. I struggle with that, that are sort of need-based. You know, we had the conversation of assisting those on fixed income, and not to call out ages in the room, but there are some in this room who are 55 and older, and they are not on a fixed income, and they are, still have earning potential, and they do earn. And they would then have the ability to benefit from this at about a rate of $600 a year. And it's not need-based, and I also struggle with the fact that these dollars are gonna go from the nation to a company that we're partnered with, that's supposed to be generating revenue within our LLC to generate revenue for the nation, yet we are going to be paying the bill for this service that's supposed to be generating revenue for us. I don't, I struggle with that connection, and the idea that this business is supposed to make money for us, yet we're gonna pay the bill for these people that would generate the money within this company. That's a struggle for me. But I also see the need for our people to be connected. The conversation was had a little bit yesterday that, you know, our children also need connectivity, and I think we've met that need of our people by having the clothing, school supply, technology assistance availability to our kids. Families can use that money towards their Internet bill. That's the intent of it. So I don't know, this is, it's all over the place. If I had an ideal situation for this, it would be structured like a program and a direct assistance to our people, where they apply, we would have information, we would have data, we'd be able to fall back on it. We would also know, maybe in the future, that the ACP, the Affordable Connectivity Program, would be up and running, and maybe this cost would be less to us, because our people would be qualified for a lower rate, or a zero rate, Internet cost. And then maybe we pay that decreased rate, so then the cost to us would be less, and it would still be a benefit to our people. But instead, we're presented with the decision to make right this second, right before the ACP program is going to be re-discussed at the federal level, and we don't have answers. We don't have data, we don't have information, and truth be told, we don't know the need. So I don't know. I'm torn on it, because I want to make sure that we are doing the most good, and I can appreciate lowering the age in the bill, because yes, it helps more people. Our ability to spread our dollars, to be able to assist more people, to take that bill off people's plate every month, that's wonderful, that's ideal. But in this manner, and in this way, in this moment, with the information we have, I honestly don't know that I can get behind it at this time. And I don't want that to be construed as not supporting our elders having connectivity, because I want them to be, when there's a need, and when it makes sense, and when the program is being run like all of our other programs, and not just this perk for a specific age group of people that we decide to roll out on a whim, that may not look the same in a year. So I'm undecided, probably more towards a no. I know that's not a firm stance to be taking, but I'm listening to all the words and taking in all the information, and I'm really thinking about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member? Hearing none, Congressman Big Horse, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, colleagues. I just wanna start by thanking all of my colleagues for all of your input, both good and bad. There's always gonna be good and bad in everything. Some of the bad points brought to light some issues I think that we need to continue to look at, but my intent was pure at heart. It was to provide Internet services to our senior citizens, which I agree, 55 is a good age, because that's when all your health problems start. And we are moving rapidly into what they call tele-meds, which you, I'm sure some of you in this room have probably already had doctor's appointments and zoomed in with a doctor. That's my, that was my intent behind this. So, you know, lowering it to 55 is okay with me, costs us a little bit more money, but that's what this money's for. So I'll be a yes for it. Thank you.
Thank you. The question is, shall ONCA 2462 pass?
Congresswoman Reevar? Second Speaker Shaw?
Yes.
Congresswoman Stapler?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman? Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman King?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon? Congressman Maker? Congressman Potts? Congresswoman Redcorn?
No.
Speaker Good Fox?
There is an alternate effective date. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. It passes and will be advanced to enrollment. ONCA 2463, an act to authorize and appropriate the amount of $382,620 to the Elder Broadband Assistance Fund and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Big Horse. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak for or against?
Okay, thank you. I just want to thank everybody who voted to increase the amount. I'm gonna ask Assistant Chief, I guess, the person driving this initiative, from what we were told, that if you would please get with AtLink and the LLC to make sure that this is rolled out, it's advertised, and that our people know exactly what to expect. I think we've been doing a great job in our communications by rolling out programs with good information, but with this, the way it is now, and that people are gonna be talking about it, they're gonna be ready, and they're gonna be like, I want it now, today. And I don't know what discussions have been had with AtLink and what this looks like, but I'm just encouraging the executive branch, your initiative here with the LLC to provide this, from the Office of the Chiefs, that you please roll this out with good information sooner than later, because we do have people speaking about it right now. So I just wanna make sure that we get this rolled out properly through, I guess, communications. It's kind of different, it's an executive branch, but then it's an LLC, so we're kinda, I would assume, I don't know who's gonna roll it out, but I hope that it is. That's my concern, is that we communicate this direct service today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member wish to speak for or against?
Madam Speaker?
Congresswoman Lemon?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Colleagues and Assistant Chief and those listening in, this is a companion bill to what we just discussed a few moments earlier. This will fund the revolving fund that we just created through our last vote. I didn't vote for the increase yesterday, not because I don't support the idea and the, what the mission of this is. I just was looking at our dollars a lot, and knowing that we are not that far from the new fiscal year, it just felt like a prudent step to take on a fiduciary situation. But of course, we're at the higher amount, which I'm gonna support. I too hope that executives listening in and Assistant Chief Walker, that we keep a close eye on, because I know that several of us will here at Congress, on what's going on at the federal level. at the federal level with the Affordable Community Program discussion that is going to come up to refunding it because it's a possible way for us to save dollars if it is refunded by the federal government. And I really hope that that is something that is taken, that becomes a priority if it is funded through the federal government, which then allows these people here that we're talking about, who will be provided this service. It may not be all of them, but those that would qualify. I really hope that that becomes a priority and I hope to keep in touch about that. So we'll be supporting this and I think it's a good thing to start, a good first step, I believe I heard a congressperson say that yesterday, a good first step in this situation and going in this way. It's also a way for us to continue to work together with the executive, looking at what's coming down the pipe from the federal government in ways that both we as a nation can benefit and AtLink at that point, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member? Congresswoman Redcorn.
Thank you again, Speaker. So I clearly voted no on the last component of this. I know it's two separate bills, but it's two parts to one thought. And I will vote no on this as well. And again, like I've said, it's not that I'm against the intent of it and I applaud and I support Congressman Big Horse in his endeavor for this because, and like he said, he was pure at heart in his intention in this and I think the intention is right and noble. You know, yesterday in conversation, we had an overall conversation about the need for infrastructure and utility help in general. And those needs keep growing, especially in this county, with utility assistance and water and all those things. And so we need to be having a larger cohesive conversation about utility infrastructure and assistance for our people and how that need can best be met rather than just chipping away at one at a time slowly. And now it's snowballed into more assistance than maybe we can continue to provide on a regular basis when we could pull back a little bit, look at the big picture and really chop it up into eatable parts, you know, to where we can actually tackle this and not bite off more than we can chew. You know, and I think too about, and maybe I am not in the know in the IT world, but you know, I'm sure that we have still some work to do with connectivity for this business, for this AtLink, Osage Broadband, WaJaji Connect, all those things. I won't try to explain all of them, but there's still work to be done. So we're still going to have some constituents in this county, 55 and older, who are not on AtLink. They will not receive this benefit. Whether they choose to not be on AtLink or whether it's not available to them yet, I don't know. I don't know what the progress on all of that looks like. And I, like I said, if there was a plan for this long-term going forward and I could see the big picture on how this was going to meet a long-term need and actually meet the need, not just meeting the needs of the urgent, perceived needs of the urgent, right this second, I could get behind a more direct program. So again, on this part, I will be voting no. And it's not because I don't want to ever see it happen. I would love to see this happen in a very intentional, directed manner that can meet the needs and maybe not even temporarily, but meet needs long-term and overall with entire utility infrastructure. So, that's where my head is at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I'm having a bear amount of heartburn with, to be honest with you, with all of the appropriation requests and legislation for this session, knowing that we still have an entire quarter left of this fiscal year. We have $2.1 million to spend, yes. Yes, you're correct, Congressman Big Horse, that's what the funds are for, but I'm so concerned about being able to meet some type of crisis or catastrophe or issue if it were to arise in the next three months if we continue to deplete this amount. So, gosh, I'm having a hard time with it. Again, just like Congresswoman Redcorn said, it doesn't mean that I don't want our seniors to have connection to the internet because I do. I think it's important. It doesn't mean that I don't care about these other issues, but I'm just really concerned about where we are as far as the amount of money that we have left to appropriate. So, I'm, you know, again, having difficulty with both of these. I think that we have to sort of come back, or at least I have to sort of come back to, okay, this is, you know, for me, it's an emotional thing to want to support our seniors. It's an emotional thing to want to take care of our people, but we have to be fiscally responsible at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member? Hearing none. Congressman Big Horse, you have the floor.
Thank you, Assistant Speaker and Assistant Chief and colleagues. I think everyone knows that we started out at $250,000 and age at 65. And I agree that moving it to 55 is a show of our sovereignty. I think, you know, that more than anything is, it's a big deal. But serving our seniors is a priority for me and dropping this down to 55, I think, was a good move because looking back at my health and my age, 55 is when you'll start seeing things happen. So, I appreciate your support and thank you.
Thank you. The question is, shall ONCA 2463 pass?
Second Speaker Shaw?
No.
Congresswoman Stapler?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Keen?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn? Congresswoman Rebarth?
Yes.
Speaker Good Fox?
No.
There is an alternate effective date. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. It passes and will be advanced to enrollment. ONCA 2464 is an act to amend ONCA 2278 to provide a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $500,000 to the Storm Shelter Assistance Fund and to establish an alternate effective date. This sponsor is Congressman Potts. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll close.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak for or against? I have Stapler, Rebarth, and then Redcorn.
Thank you, Speaker. This bill is, to me, I kind of bundled it with the last couple of bills and it's all talking about benefits or services that we can provide and new services. Well, on this one, this is about storm shelters, which I'm all in favor of, doing storm shelters. My problem with the bill is that there is no existing plan, it's put a real burden on the program that's trying to run it. There seem to be no parameters in place to control it. I think it's something that can go on for longevity. I don't think anything we do today is going to strengthen or tear it down. It's where we've got to, so I will support it. I will say, though, that one of the things that I keep thinking about is my sister's in Houston. She's sitting in a house with no electricity, waiting on a hurricane to blow through. We have three coastlines. That's a problem. It's not a problem we know about because we live in tornado alley, which is also shifting on us. So, you know, for the Midwest and the South, it's the tornadoes. For the East and West Coast and the Gulf, it's hurricanes. For the northern boundaries, it's, you know, deadly snowstorms. This is fixing a tiny problem that we have here. It's not fixing all of them. So I hope that you consider this in the future. And the fact of the matter is, information we've been waiting on is sitting in the chief's office, I mentioned this before earlier today, that we've been asking for. When the mayor and our grants start to came, the information was here and we still couldn't get the information. We're not able to make valid decisive decisions because of holdups. It's happened all through my six years going on here. So that's one problem. I'm not, I don't have a problem with the money. There's money coming, there's money been here, we've got another quarter to live and no telling what's going to happen in that quarter. We're all aware that there's some things out there pending that we need to be watching for and thinking about. But, you know, if the money's there, I guess we'll deal with it. If the money's not there, we won't be able to deal with it. The next thing is when we ran the big three and we had our big argument about it several years back, that was at a time when our gaming revenue was set at 46 million. At that point, it was taking 40% of our revenue to cover those big three. Not a problem, but it was something to consider that it was growing. It was growing at that time. With the new influx of gaming revenues, we've got room currently, and I didn't really calculate it out, I just kind of estimated it. We're now dropping down to about 27%, 30%. So there's room. And I want you all to build benefits, build something that's life-changing for our people, but don't be reckless about it. And the actions of other people are making us reckless about it and making us know and feel that we aren't making the right decisions. That's why all of the arguments and the what-ifs and what if this happens, what if that happens? We can't save everybody, but we can do what we can to help them in life-changing means. And that's what I always used to think about my little village. What can I do that's life-changing for them? By compacting this government, we were able to create a life change for the entire community. By adding education, we were able to make a life change for everyone, adults and our youth alike. With programs like this, we're able to elevate our families. These are the things that are the burden of Congress, but they're also within the power of Congress. Today, we funded things we didn't want to fund, but we did it anyway because we feel like we can get there in the future. So it's going to be up to you all to get yourselves organized and take a look at this and fight with them to get the information that you need to make better decisions in the future. So I'm supporting this, but I just wanted to encourage you all to move forward and to do more for our people because we can afford it right now. Do it before the government sucks it up because that's coming in the fall. So, all right, I encourage you to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker, and thank you, Congresswoman Stapler. You didn't cry, but I know that you're, I hear you and I want you to know that I do and I listen to you. You've always been a person that looks at the money, always. What I remember of you, working with you since early 2000, it's always been about the money. I like that about you. You're very conscious about our current situation, you understand financials, you understand the revenue side and the expenditure side. And that's something we asked for, we didn't get. I did reach out to the treasurer and I asked, where are we with regards to our projected revenue? And again, our burn rate, where are we? And you hear Congresswoman Lemon, she mentions it too. What's our burn rate? You guys, quit saying big three and quit saying big four or big five. We are way past that, guys. That is such old news. We're like up in the big 50s now. We serve so many people in different ways. Stop limiting what we do by saying three or four. I just, that's the only thing, I just, I don't like that word, the big three. That just, ugh, no. I come to the podium, I was traumatized by the tornado in Barnes and Noble, I ain't gonna lie, affected my brother. I've said that. I had to go down there and be in it. It's hard for, I'm up here with a heartstring because lord forbid something happened and we weren't able to serve somebody with a tornado. But what Ms. Stapler is saying to you all is we can't fix everything, something's going to happen somewhere else. I would love to. We punted this program, as they may say, we've punted it. We did. We offered a direct service and a reaction. I think the sponsor took advantage of my emotions and all of ours at that time because instead of going in and you heard emergency management when they spoke, we got to be able to address things immediately. That's emergency management. We're not that. Congress, we're here to appropriate money, but we also have other things that are out here. What they're speaking of is we may have some litigation fees coming our way this fiscal year. We don't know. There are a lot of things going on that are going to take money, but I'm going to vote no. And it's not because I don't care and it's not about the money we punted. We haven't spent a dime that we appropriated last month or in May towards this effort. We haven't even respected the folks that are managing this program to get the data. And yesterday, we said it a thousand times and our colleagues still say, well, what about that info? They've been saying to you at this podium, they do not have the data. I'm asking that you respect that department. Let's let them come back to us with good information so we can make some good decisions. And I'm with you. I want, Assistant Chief, will you please ask our chief to get us the census results? They've been done, they're sitting in his office. I've asked for them twice now. Speakers asked for them twice. We're ready. We have to start moving in a direction where we are looking at data, basing information, money off of data, not our heart, not what we think, what we hear, not social media, but based off of data provided by our people, our people. We're going to lead any country in this initiative, I promise you, but we got to see the results. They don't belong to you guys. We put this in law, those results belong to everybody. Even our constituents want to see. And I'm asking that you please connect us with that, if you would, with those results because that's where I want to go. It's where I'm going, whether I'm standing here by myself or not, that's where I'm going. I'm going to make decisions based off of data and I'm going to insist on it. Your topic of discussion about you've sit here for six years without information, I used to hear that when I was on the executive branch side, all the time. I'm sure Assistant Chief, you understand that. You understand being sitting here and so does Chief, sitting here trying to make a decision without data.
Congresswoman Rebarth, that's time. Thank you, Brooklyn.
Congresswoman Redcorn, then Congressman Keen.
Thank you, Speaker. I'll try to not take all my time. We'll see. This is another one of those bills that I've been back and forth, back and forth on, I've prayed a lot about this. There's a few things, and I agree with and I echo what Congresswoman Rebarth just said. I do feel like our emotions and the timing were taken advantage of when this bill was presented to us to begin with. Nevertheless, I voted the way I voted. Would I vote that same way now? I don't know. I really don't. Because I want our people to be safe, I want our people to feel safe, and in the instance that we're able to assist in that, that's even better. that we're able to assist in that, that's an even bigger blessing. I've taken shelter with my babies, put their bike helmets on them, and made sure everybody had their rain boots on. I got an open floor plan. There isn't any place to hide in my house. I don't have one interior bathroom, one interior closet, nothing. I got nothing. But we've tried our best in the laundry room. Would I love to have a space in my garage above ground, or a space in my garage below ground where I could get in there and be safe and know my children are safe? Hundred percent. Would love that. I don't, I mean, I live here in Oklahoma, obviously, but that, there's, everybody has that need. I also feel the reality, and the financial reality, that if we look at the number of homeowners, A, who took the census, but then B, you pair that with those who didn't, how many people who are sending in applications right this second didn't even fill out our census? I would say a good chunk of them. So we're looking at this massive problem again, that we're trying to just start eating away at. We're taking off huge bites of it because it's a noble cause, and it is. Keeping our people safe and protecting our people and doing whatever we can to stand in the gap between harm for them is good. But can't do it, we can't do it all immediately, right away. Is this something that I want us to be able to provide? Ideally, yes. But at the same time, I want to, I mean, truly, I want to be able to help people in all kinds of ways, if they need food, if they need shelter, if they need lights and water, they need heat, when they need an education, when they need help with their healthcare expenses, or they need mortgage assistance, and the crisis assistance, and burial assistance. Yes, I want to be able to help our people in their times of need and keep them safe. I also want to do what's right for our people and what's best for them overall. And I don't know that this is the right way to do that right now. Is there a better way to roll this out down the road in segments and in pieces, little by little, year after year, where people are able to benefit from multiple manners of assistance? Yes, we can do that better. We can do this better. Doing it doesn't mean it's done right. We can do this better. We should do this better. Just doing it right away and throwing money at the situation doesn't mean that we're doing it the right way, because we'd be helping X amount of people, less than 1% of our people at this point, much less than 1% of our people at this point. And while that is wonderful, we cannot help everybody in this moment, in this way, with this assistance. But I do believe that we can do this better. Should we continue this conversation about storm shelter assistance? I absolutely think that we should. Am I in support of it being an option for people to choose from and determine that that is their greatest need? Yes, I do. But do I also think that we need to continue the conversation, that there are other ways that we could help our people, that would enable them to be able to do this for themselves, but we could maybe meet a greater need behind the scenes? Yeah, I think that's a conversation we should have, too. Will there be interest in this if the amount passes and the bill passes? I'm sure there will be. I'm sure it'll be exhausted. The funds will be exhausted. I'm certain of it. I would be shocked, honestly, if all the funds are not exhausted. And I'll drive home that point as well. Currently, we've spent not one single dollar of the original appropriated amount. We will. All of those funds will be exhausted. That also does not mean that we cannot come back in a couple of months in our main budget session and sit down and have a good informational conversation about what the need truly is. Maybe there really are only 106 applications, or maybe 120 come in and then no more. Okay, well, let's have that educated conversation then. But right this second, I don't think that this is the best way to do what we're trying to do. I think we have the best intention.
Congresswoman Rebar, that's your time.
I did meet the time.
I just want to say I support this appropriation, but I want to clarify some things. Currently, we heard from the Housing Department, they have one intex specialist taking all these applications. That's one. That's borderline criminal. Does that change Osage's minds about, well, so-and-so's against storm shelter? Well, when we pass a law, executing the law is also a part. Another thing, out of all the applications, there's not been one application approved from our Housing Department, not a single one. So when people look at this votes count, I'm afraid my fellow colleagues are going to be unjustly demonized because they have legitimate questions about this. Let's say, we don't even know, like Congresswoman Redcorn said, there hasn't been a single dollar spent from the $250,000. I have a hunch that after I leave this podium, there's going to be other congressmembers that come on here with more simplistic platitudes that say, I pushed for this amount of money, and we should do this, and if you don't agree with that, you don't care. I'm pushing back against that, because like I said, there's a lot of complexity to this. We could easily wait 60 days and come back. We could have a more defined plan, maybe. Ideally, when we pass laws, the executive branch is on board, we have the data, the tribal department is also on board. Ideally, is a mark we pretty consistently miss down here. That needs to get better. So I just want to say that much. Again, I support the appropriation. In five years, someone's going to say, King supported the storm shelter assistance. But I just want, again, I want to reiterate that if you do not support this appropriation, there is valid questions remaining. There is. So, of course, it's politics, we all know that, but I just wanted to get on the record and make that clear. So this isn't an easy vote for even myself. So I just wanted to, again, make that clear. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other member wish to speak for or against?
Madam Speaker.
Congresswoman Lemon.
Thank you. I too will try not to take up my time, as much that time. I know it's getting hot in my office. I too don't have air conditioning. I thought one less body in the office would be better for heat purposes. So to the matter, you know, we've spoke about the bottom dollar, about how much we have and how much we're going to have going forward, and how much we have in treasury, and what we do have. And I hear what you're saying, Congresswoman Stabler, and I know that, you know, everybody that's got up and spoke, thank you, Congressman King, all you all, thank you so much, because it makes it easier for me to vote no. And the reason it is, is because this is what we're supposed to do, and we're not going to take it personal. Some of us will, but we're not supposed to. And, you know, I always wonder, like, if we were from Germany, could we call over to Germany and ask them to get us a storm shelter and then fund us one over here? Do you think the Germans would do that for us? I mean, if we're talking about sovereignty and we're talking about within our jurisdictional boundaries, we talk about all those things. You know, I don't think, if I was German, they're going to build me a storm shelter because I live outside my boundaries. Nobody wants to talk about that, and that's okay, but that's one way that if we had taken a lot of our monies that had left our jurisdictional boundaries, that we've allowed to, and not that I don't support some of it, but I do support some restrictions with it. Imagine what we could have building this up here and investing here, and how it would have possibly been better to do something like that, but we can't go back. You know, hindsight's tough, right? The reason the broadband, elder broadband direct service is more easier for me to swallow or more palpable is because, one, there's restrictions, it's within Osage County, and it's a lot more measurable than what we have in front of us with this vote today. Like I said earlier, why would somebody in Montana need a storm shelter? I'm not saying a tornado couldn't happen there. I'm not saying that, but they might want something different, which goes back to Congresswoman Stabler's cafeteria plan. And there's this saying, and I won't get it right, but you know, whenever you, politics, sometimes timing is everything. And we got stuck in a timing loop of trauma. We didn't, and we stayed there, and we're still there, and I keep working through it, and we voted on that. I'm not saying it's not a war because, I'm just saying, it doesn't hurt to pump the brakes. We've done it before, and we've looked at it again, and come back and discussed it and had better information. I can't support this today. I know that we've already funded it before. What was really said in some of this debate was that we have received applications, received. We don't have any idea how many are approved and how many are denied. I know personally, people that I have, you know, sent to the nation to get resources, and they've applied for things, and they didn't get approved. So we're also misconstruing the numbers in that way. Just because you're receiving 100 and somewhat applications doesn't mean they're all going to be approved. So I just feel like that number still is not going to be where we need for it to be, and us really understanding the questions, or getting the understanding of the questions that we have. So I won't support this today. I'm not saying I can't support something in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member? Hearing none, Congressman Potts, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There was quite a bit there. I'm thankful that we're able to offer the service and to speak directly, because it's an issue that I'm getting texts from Osages currently in Houston. I'm proud to say that it offers hurricane shelter assistance. We specifically put that in the bill. Individuals in Texas can apply for a safe room that will protect them from hurricane-force winds. That doesn't solve the problem of electricity, and it won't protect the lives of every citizen in every situation, but it is a step. I will fervently reject the notion that I took advantage of emotions. Aside from the obvious attack on my intentions and my motives, which is strictly prohibited by our Constitution's ethics provision, this bill's set in committee for two years. Where were the interim studies? Where were the calls for data then? We didn't hear that. My hope is that we don't just shut off this application process when we reach the funding limit, probably by the end of this week. My hope is that the executive branch does take steps to explain to the public that future applications will either be kept on file, we don't just return them, or that we develop a plan that we're only going to fund X number of these shelters every year as we go forward, and that we make provisions for our elders to be treated with preference. That's where I'd like to see this go, and I'm proud to see us going in that direction. Congressman Big Horse is correct. These funds exist to serve, not to save. So I'm excited to assure the public that we'll be back having this conversation in two months, when we have upwards of $78 million to appropriate. Hopefully, then, the concern of how much money we have left should be negated, and we can fund this program according to the plan that the executive has requested at that time. But as far as the information, we have the information we need. The census is a count of our people. I grow more fearful by the hour that we continue to call for this census, because if the intent is to use it as a means to limit these services, then I'd like to take my vote back on that, not on my vote for this bill. I'm also increasingly concerned about calls to limit services to Osage County, or that somehow spending money outside of our jurisdictional boundaries is less worthy. I'm reminded that we have a constituent that lives in Germany, and I'm proud to offer him the same rights of being an Osage citizen regardless of where he lives, because his location does not define his rights as an Osage citizen. Here's the data. We had 106 active applications. The 750 in totality that will be appropriated is enough to serve 150 people, if each of those require the $5,000. But I'll remind this body that we increased that amount. We made that decision to increase the amount and to fund 100% instead of 50%, which was what was originally proposed. So while there are some that may want to claw this back, I'm going to continue to fight for appropriations, because I think this is a great benefit. And we have the data. It's just that some that don't agree with the data because it doesn't fit the agenda. So thank you all for the debate, and I'm really, truly hoping that we can back away from some of these comments and things that are being made, because at the end of the day, the Osage people are going to be served by this bill, and I think that that's a good day. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. The question is, shall ONCA 2464 pass?
Congresswoman Stabler?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Keen?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
No.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
No.
Congresswoman Rebar?
No.
Second Speaker Shaw?
No.
Speaker Good Fox?
There is an alternate effective date. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. It passes and will be advanced to enrollment. ONCA 2465, an act to amend ONCA 2385 to provide an appropriation to the Osage Veterans Memorial Fund in the amount of $72,000, and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Potts. How do you wish to proceed?
Out closed.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak for or against? Hearing none, you have the floor.
I waive my time.
Thank you. The question is, shall ONCA 2465 pass?
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Keen?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Yes.
Second Speaker Shaw?
Yes.
Congresswoman Stabler?
Yes.
Speaker Good Fox?
Yes. There is an alternate effective date. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. It passes and will be advanced to enrollment. ONCA 2466 is an act to amend ONCA 2385 to provide an appropriation to the Osage Nation Museum for a matching grant in the amount of $51,500, and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Shaw. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll waive my time.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak for or against? Hearing none, the question is, shall ONCA 2466 pass?
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Keen?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Yes.
Second Speaker Shaw?
Yes.
Congresswoman Stabler?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Speaker Good Fox?
Yes. There is an alternate effective date. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. It passes and will be advanced to enrollment. ONCA 2467, an act to amend ONCA 23-108 to provide supplemental appropriations to CCIOPICA in the amount of $400,000 in non-tribal funds, and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Stabler. How do you wish to proceed?
Out closed.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak for or against? Hearing none, you have the floor.
I'll waive my time.
Thank you. The question is, shall ONCA 2467 pass?
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Keen?
Yes.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Potts?
Yes.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Yes.
Second Speaker Shaw?
Yes.
Congresswoman Stabler?
Yes.
Congressman Tillman?
Yes.
Congressman Big Horse?
Yes.
Speaker Good Fox?
Yes. There is an alternate effective date. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes. All of those in favor of the alternate effective date signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. It passes and will be advanced to enrollment. We are now in motions and notices. Congresswoman Shaw?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Journal of July 8, 2024, is presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All of those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Passes, thank you very much. And we are now to item 10, adjournment. Congresswoman, I'm sorry, was there someone that needed to say something? Congresswoman Lemon, was that you?
I was going to say, move to adjourn session.
No. Congresswoman Stapler?
Thank you, Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the 13th special session.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the 13th special session presented by Congresswoman Stapler. We will miss you. Thank you for all you've done for our Osage people, Congresswoman. All of those in favor of adjourning this session signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We're adjourned.